We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2022-21 for October 4, 2022. Others that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
(inaudible) 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 Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections or changes? Seeing on all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The approval of the consent agenda is unanimous. Good evening, Mr. Mitchell. How are you?
I'd like to bring up for public hearing, I'm going to introduce the--
You could bring your mic down there, Andy, so we can hear you.
Reintroduce Bill 2022-10, which is a prohibition on DAF. And start with-- Wait a minute. I'm sorry, I thought I had it organized. To read the-- Here it is. I'm sorry. Show on top.
Sure.
It's this an act amend chapter 2025, the Wycomico County Code, entitled zoning, part six, titled accessory and principal uses, article 17, titled accessory uses, section 202562, titled outside storage, and article 18, titled principal uses, section 202565, outside storage, prohibit open-top storage of a liquid organic fertilizer or amendment. Now, this is before any of the recommended amendments. Whereas the county council, Wycomico County in Maryland, hereby finds that open-top storage, act of liquid organic fertilizer or soil amendments are contrary to the interests of county and citizens, and whereas the county council, Wycomico County in Maryland, has determined that it's right and proper and within its authority to protect residents from adverse effects of storage of liquid organic fertilizer or amendments in open-top tanks, been enacted, enacted or ordained by county council, Wycomico County, Maryland Legislative Session, that those sections I previously read be amended. And 25-- I mean, 22562, outside storage, would read, define an open-top storage tank as an open-top storage tank, an above-ground tank, top structure, designed and used for the storage of an agricultural product, byproduct fertilizer or soil amendment. Liquid organic fertilizer or soil amendment is a state of Maryland-approved liquid organic fertilizer or soil amendment produced from poultry or other animal processing residuals via a dissolved air flotation process, DAF. An open-top tank storage of liquid organic fertilizer amendment as defined above is prohibited in all zoning districts, except as provided paragraph E3 below. This prohibition is prospective. The prohibition stated herein shall not apply to liquid organic fertilizer amendment stored by a farmer or farming business on land in the agricultural rural A1 district owned or leased by said farmer or farming business, for use only on land owned or titled by said farmer or farming business. And then the next section is 22565, outside storage. It has the same definitions. Virtually everything's the same, except that it applies in that section. And been enacted that this legislative bill be known as 2022-10, Wycomico County shall take effect 60 days after final passage unless proper petition or referendum shall be filed. Now, since that's happened, there's been a lot of discussion of the council, since that was first introduced, and from various interest groups. A number of attorneys have weighed in and provided helpful information. And so, as that came about-- this came about after it was decided that prohibition may be possible. I was directed to determine whether it was within the authority of the council to do that. I provided a legal opinion. The brief answer was Wycomico County Council, and exercise those powers granted by the state of Maryland, and not limited by the county charter, does not-- does have the authority to prohibit and regulate storage of DAF within the county. And that's very briefly-- the basic authority comes from the Express Powers Act. It allows the charter counties, such as Wycomico, to enact laws related to zoning for health and welfare. The policy of state is that planning and zoning should be handled by-- implemented by local government. The-- it can-- the express powers confers on the county council the power to enact local laws, protect, promote health, safety, morals, comfort, welfare, related to structures. General-- the county's general zoning policy has picked all those up and has been regulating them. So I found that-- or my opinion was that they had the authority. And the question was, has that authority been blocked in some fashion? And the three things that had come up were whether it was blocked by preemption. That was discussed several times. The right to farm-- or whether it was possibly a taking. The preemption-- there are three kinds. One by conflict, and that's where there is-- where the laws clash between the state and the county, so that you can't have them both. I did not find that that was in a case. Express preemptions, where there's a statute that basically says the county can't legislate in this field. I did not find that. The implied preemption is a factual matter, applying the facts to the law. And it is more rigorous. There are a set of secondary factors to be considered. I went through them, considered all of them. I could not see that the state, although it has comprehensively regulated the use, application of DAF to the soil, it has not taken any step to regulate the storage. Now, it has in other fields, like commercial fertilizer, and you'll see one of the recommendations was to take the word fertilizer out of the ordinance for that reason. Anyway, I did not find it was preempted by implication. The right to farm is statutory, both at the state and the county level. It really doesn't apply to this. DAF is not produced on the farm, by the farmer. It's-- it simply doesn't apply, that I can see. And it should also be noted that in the county code and the state is similar, the chapter is not intended to be construed to modify or bridge the laws pertaining to public health, safety, welfare, or zoning. So I did not see that it affected the right to farm. And as to the taking, that's pretty simple. Basically, unless there's a physical taking, you have to show-- that it-- to be an unconstitutional taking, you have to show that all the beneficial use of the property has been taken away, that you can't use the property for anything of any reasonable purpose. That's certainly not the case here. If somebody had farmland, or any other land, and they wanted to use it, and suddenly decided to use it for a DAF tank, and they say, hey, you prohibited that, that's not a taking. They would have already had to have it there and have it taken away, or have no other use they could make of the property. I would indicate that I shared this opinion with Mr. Wilbur, who joined in the opinion. And then, after this point, listening to what the people had to say, things that were submitted in writing, and other things, and things that the council had to say, I recommended, in three different ways, actually, amendments I thought would be appropriate to this bill. I think council administrator Purley has provided each of you with that. There are five of them. One is to change the definition of open-top storage structure to say an open-top structure, whether above ground, partially above ground, or below ground, or a lagoon-type structure used for the storage of agricultural product or byproduct or soil amendment. Now, there's been some question as to why we didn't just say DAF in here. And the reason is because you're just defining the structure. If you say it was a structure for the use of DAF, then I think you might have to go back and show when it was built, that was why it was built. This is saying-- this is just saying, this is the structure we're looking at. The next step is to say what the product is, what the material is. And then the third step is to prohibit that material from being in that kind of a tank. So that's why it doesn't say more. The second amendment would be to delete the word "tank," which you'll see-- it's already been deleted in that one above. But it appears in the whereas clause and a couple other places. And it was just replaced with "structure." Partly that was because we heard from the planning department about the possible problem of the lagoon. And it may have been raised by some other people, too. I think somebody that's here tonight raised that. So the structure's in there, as is lagoon. The third amendment was by-- to delete the word "processing," where it appears twice, and insert the word "rendering process." So it had said-- the definition of DAF had said it was a-- a poultry or other animal-- it was a process involving poultry or other animal. And we just made sure it showed rendering. That was important. That was brought up by several people. Let me see if I can see what it actually used to say. Yeah. It used to say, "produced from poultry or other animal processing residuals via dissolved air flotation." And we made it plain that it had to be rendering. That's what the amendment would do, if you adopt it. And the third was almost a rewrite of the-- there was a provision in there that would say that the prohibition on storage did not apply to farmer or farming business on their own property, or leased property. But we want to make sure that it wasn't a position where somebody that had several hundred acres could just put a giant tank out there and say, hey, it's on my property. This was put in there for the actual farmer who was using the DAF or applying it to a soil, having applied to a soil. So the amendment would-- if adopted, would say, "The prohibition stated herein shall not prohibit a farmer or farming business from temporarily storing liquid organic soil amendment in a mobile, closed container for a period of not more than 45 consecutive days during the application process, provided that the land on which it is stored is in Wycomico County Agricultural Rural A1 zoning district, and that the stored material is applied to the same land on which it is stored." And we consulted with, you know, somebody knowledgeable about how this stuff is used, and they thought that would work. And the fifth amendment was-- the most recent was to delete the word fertilizer from the bill. And I've came across that in my research. And then Mr. Cropper was kind enough to point that out during his testimony at the last meeting. So I was suggesting, because fertilizer is regulated, and they do regulate the storage of fertilizer, that even though it wasn't intended to mean that, that it just be taken out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on legislative bill number 2022-10. Anyone that would like to speak, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. I would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is that correct? Three minutes? And if you find that you may be repetitive, please do us a favor and try to avoid too much repetition, so that everyone will have a chance to speak. So the floor is open right now, as on legislative bill number 2022-10.
(laughing) My name is Holly Porter. I'm the executive director of the Delmarva Chicken Association, which represents 1,600 chicken growers, companies, company employees, allied businesses, hundreds of which live right here in Wycomico County, pay taxes in Wycomico County, and are the backbone of this economy. We are in strong opposition of legislative bill 2022-10 for many reasons. Number one, let's just start with the fact that, for the first time, we're hearing five amendments on a bill that's being heard this evening. I do have to wonder whether or not the council is really in a ready or in a position to move forward with a bill with so many amendments already being proposed. Secondly, as was mentioned, it was recommended to remove the term fertilizer, as it was comprehensively regulated by the state. But DAF residuals, which are soil amendments or conditioners, are also regulated, tested, and categorized by MDA, the state chemists, under the same code as the fertilizer code, which is Title 15, Subtitle 18, Chapter 3. And they're managed and governed by MDA and the state through the nutrient management regulations, just like fertilizer. So if we have concerns about where this might mean for preemption for fertilizer, we should have those same concerns for soil conditioners. And third, we cannot stress enough the concern of what this might mean for the future, when the county-- and the council questions other parts of agriculture that are no longer in the interests of the county, or to protect the citizens from the perceived adverse effects, like manure storage structures or chicken houses. We ask the council to reconsider the proposal of allowing this structure in A1, with the special exceptions, and even with the restrictions, while some of those were not quite science-based. There is a better way for this council to support all citizens of this county, including those in agriculture. Thank you.
My name's Drew Geddy. I'm the vice president of Government Relations and Environmental Sustainability for Purdue Farms. I want to start by stating that all the DAF sludge that's generated from our Salisbury facility is sent to Bioenergy Devco in Delaware, where it's turned into compost. So although our operations are not impacted by this legislation, I'm here tonight to express concern that the legislation being considered is not tailored to the issue at hand. And I would surprise that the issue at hand is the improper management of a single DAF storage tank in Wycomico County. However, the legislation does nothing to address the management of this tank, as its use is grandfathered in. Instead of addressing the issue, the council's taken the opportunity to shift the focus to animal waste and to agriculture. I put forth that if the concern is over the storage and application of waste streams, then the legislation should also deal with bio-salads that are also generated and stored in the county. In short, the legislation does nothing to address the issue, amounts to an unnecessary attack on agriculture. I respectfully request that the council not move forward with this legislation. Thank you.
I've been a poultry farmer in Wycomico County for 34 years. And I am dismayed and ashamed of this council, and I've never said that before. Four of you will not even be returning to this council. Yet you're about to make a decision that will have a major impact on agriculture in this county, and possibly agriculture elsewhere. As was said earlier, yes, there's one tank, one bad actor, but yet we're out to attack all of Ag. I strongly suggest that you look at this bill again, you look at these amendments, and come up with something that keeps us in agriculture, keeps it in the A1 zone. Put your restrictions in place, your exceptions, but do something about it. When you look around this county, you see Purdue Stadium, you see the Purdue Business School, you see Garrary Hall, you see the donations to United Fund. You see the things that these companies have done, and these growers, and these crop farmers, and grain farmers, to make this a viable, successful county. And what you're doing tonight is just tearing it apart. And I really hope that you can come together and come up with a solution other than a bill like this. Thank you.
May I ask Chesnick?
Sir? So, do we know if there's anyone downstairs or in the hallway that does want to speak?
We don't. We just have a few people standing out in the hall.
Is there any way to have contact with security downstairs?
We do.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
My name's Alex McCray. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, specifically on Regan Road. This is about-- to address some of these issues-- this is about one tank, but this is about going forward. This isn't about fixing-- it is-- it's about going forward, it's looking forward, and seeing what we can do about a situation that might have happened. And we do have somebody that's not-- that-- or this tank was put in under some circumstances that may-- that is not at-- is not what is being discussed tonight. But we do want to provide for the people of Wycomico County, that they can have a quality of life that's not impacted by that. This specific type of application does not result from-- directly from agriculture, is a byproduct of a factory process. And as such, it should be treated as something separate from an agricultural stream. I appreciate that-- I do enjoy eating chicken, and I do appreciate all that the poultry industry does provide in terms of tax and-- in terms of taxes and jobs for the county. This situation is something outside of that. This is a-- it is a quality of life. This is above and beyond what agricultural-- normal agricultural smells goes into. It is above and beyond having to wait behind a combine so that you can get to work. This is a significant impact on a small road that is not built to handle the kind of traffic that is now-- that is now traveling up and down Border Mill and Regan Road. There-- yeah. That's what I think, and I appreciate your amendments, and you're working towards coming to a solution that will help everybody. Don't let fear run your life. Use reason. Use-- try to find a best fit for everybody. I think that you could make an argument for a slippery slope on both ways. What happens next? Does agricultural industry just start labeling everything agricultural, and then they can do whatever they want on their property? It's a question. I don't know that we're going to get that answer tonight, but I do appreciate your efforts in moving forward and trying to find the best solution to let the farmers farm, let the people live, and Wycomico County continue to thrive as a successful agricultural center in Maryland.
May I ask Mr. McCray?
I'm Carol Donoghue, from Whitehaven, originally from Salisbury. I'd like to first compliment Mr. Mitchell on the strength of his analysis and on the amendments that he has proposed. We think they are improvements. There's room for further clarification, and you have also some amendments that have been proposed by the NAG group to further clarify and further tailor the bill. We're hearing concerns that, you know, this is the camel's nose under the tent, or what have you, and that this is going to destroy agriculture here. Nobody's trying to destroy agriculture. Mr. Mitchell has himself concluded that this has nothing to do with the Right to Farm Act. Nobody's saying that farmers can't put DAF on their fields. We proposed legislation in the past to confirm that, and we're told that it was unnecessary. Nobody is saying that the poultry industry is not welcome here. The-- there have been concerns that farmers are concerned about these limitations. The Farm Bureau of Wycomico County has come up very strongly in favor of reasonable regulations. All we're trying to do is strike an appropriate balance. I think the council's spent enough time on this. What matters is not what you say, what matters is what you do. And so, I'll leave it there.
Donoghue?
Lynette County, Porter Mill Road, Hebron. First, I want to thank you very much. This has been a grueling three and a half years. And I do appreciate you looking at it. It was-- the reason why it took so long is because of COVID. And it wasn't because you were dragging your feet over that. It was-- we got-- we were set back by at least a year and a half in this process. So I appreciate you looking at this. I appreciate the effort that's gone into this, the tons of emails and phone calls that you have listened to and responded to. And I'd just say, we were the last group-- NAG was the last group to even consider a prohibition. I think when we stood up here in July, it was-- we gave you a whole grocery list full of restrictions, because we were resigned to it being either in the industrial or the Ag Zone. But this is what we have, and this is what we have to work with. And I do appreciate the amendments that have been recommended. You could go further, and there will be others that will be recommended by our group. And I appreciate you considering them. I do have a question on this bill that you have submitted with the amendments, and it is in section E1B, where it says liquid organic and fertilizer is struck. Soil amendment, the state of Maryland-approved liquid organic soil amendment produced from poultry or other animal rendering process residuals. Yes, it is coming from a rendering process called-- at Valley Proteins, but it is also coming directly from the poultry processors. So taking this out of the bill and eliminating the poultry processors is leaving a door wide enough for a DAF truck to drive through. And I would hope that you consider that and what this could possibly do. Yes, this should never have happened. This should never have happened. We shouldn't be having to do this. The state of Maryland has said, and I've spoken with them, and they have publications, said that they have hands-off on storage and transportation of this stuff. We-- you can look it up on the internet. You can call Dwight Dodger and talk to him. They don't want anything to do with the storage of this stuff. If they wanted to-- if they wanted to, they could. So maybe they need to. But as it is now, it's up to you, fellas and lady. Sorry about that. So please consider this. And it is-- I have-- a lot of my neighbors are here tonight, and it has been a huge disruption in our quality of life. And you don't need to hear all about the stink, and you don't need to hear all about the trucks that are coming in every 20 minutes, even now. And there's not time for a crust to form to knock down the odor, because they're taking it in and out so frequently. This is being used in an industrial way. This is being used in an industrial way. And I don't know how other to resolve this than just what you're doing. It's unfortunate that it has come down to the poultry industry claiming that this will eliminate, what we're doing here will eliminate the agricultural industry on the shore, and that the next thing that you're going to consider is chicken houses and manure barns. I think that, I'm going to give you a lot more credit than that, that you would not allow that to happen in this, in this county, and that you will protect the farmers, and you will protect the poultry industry. I just think that this is, this is something that has been dropped in your lap, and this is what it's come down to. So please consider the amendments, and also this adding poultry processing back in like you had it originally. And I do appreciate you putting rendering in there, because I think before you had left rendering out. So now it covers all the DAF residuals and the places of origin. Thank you.
Mr. Kenny.
Hi, my name's Lee Richardson, Wacomico County, Willard area, fifth generation farmer, fourth generation chicken farmer at least. Hold on a second. Before I say anything, I just want to check. The sky is not falling tonight, and it's not going to be falling anytime soon because of this bill. I have stood up here, I've stood in front of the state, I've stood in front of many other groups. Most of the time, I'm up here fighting against an environmental group, drawing their butt from a hole in the ground. But I'm standing in front of a county council that, well aware of agriculture, has known agriculture for a long time. And I think you're doing the right thing with this bill. It is doing the right thing, you know, integrity is a big word for politicians, but tonight it's an important one, because we're doing what's right. You know, if I had been fighting this, this group of citizens that live next to it, it was an easy fight for them. I'd have brought a five gallon bucket and set it right in front of Mr. Cannon every meeting, every time. We wouldn't be here for three years, because y'all wouldn't have been outstanding. Now, granted, you know, I will fight for the poultry industry the rest of my life, but it will be for the right thing, and tonight is not the right thing. You're not environmentalists here, they're people that know what they're talking about, and they're trying to live their life, and it's wrong. And I think this bill needs to be passed, and needs to be passed sooner than later. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council. It's good to be back and to appear before you again. My name's King Burnett. I own a farm on Regan Road. I used to live on Regan Road. Matter of fact, the gentleman who spoke a minute ago, Mr. McCray, lives in my former home, which is just adjacent to the property where the present tank is, and my farm's across the road from that. First, I, I do want to say that, how proud I am of, of the time and effort that this council has put in this matter. I don't think I can remember in the times, in many years, over 40 years that I practiced law here, saying the council spends so much time on any single matter, and you have done that, and I'm very proud of all of you. I do want to address just some of the business and cost of matters. This is not an easy place to discuss all the wording of the bills before you. So I want to address some of the business matters. You know, Purdue Farms is one of our largest employers, and of course, has been mentioned one of our community benefactors. Frank Purdue was a friend of mine and a client of mine. He was active in our community, and he did so many things, and the Purdue company has continued that. It's been in the forefront of the chicken industry, too. That's what I want to really mention to you. The waste coming from the chicken industry is one of the biggest problems of the industry. It's one of the things that is most threatening to the industry, is handling of this waste. And what has Purdue done? Years ago, it became the first company to establish a recycling center in Seaford, where it took chicken waste. Nobody else was doing that. They were the first. They said, well, we're going to step up to the plate. We're going to do that. And they established that. And very recently, they put out a press release saying that they'd sold it to an international company, who was going to continue that work. And in addition, was going to put in an anaerobic digester that would handle the DAF and have it recycled, so that the gas that's emitted from the rotting of that stuff that stinks so much would be trapped and caught and recycled and used for businesses and consumers. Now, that's a big step for a company to take. None of the other companies have done that. Now, recently, they also signed a contract for 20 years, that they were, for the next 20 years, they're going to take all their waste up there to be recycled. So that's the future of this industry. I think if you asked them, that's what they'd say. This is what we see as the future. But what is happening here? The chicken group, the, what I always call the poultry industry, you know, they changed their name to Chicken Industry, that come in here, and they're, they're representing the Delaware companies that want to bring their waste here. We're not producing any waste that needs to be stored here. So they, they've shown us the way, and we're here, they're being asked to help their competitors. That's the way I see it. Now, the present tank pays no real estate taxes, zero on the tank. It's not an improvement that's taxed. It's taxed at the farm rate, that little farm, the farm land there. You get no tax. The zoning office didn't even charge them a fee for the building permit. A million dollars, tank, no fee. Because it's agriculture, they said. It has no visible employees, these tanks. There's nobody there guarding the place or doing anything. Truck comes and just hooks up and either takes it or leaves it. So we got lots of trucks going on our country roads, running up the taxpayer costs, and you all are being asked to subsidize those out of state people to come in here and run their trucks up and down our roads, and store this material that stinks and is harmful to our citizens. Now, you're about to take, I certainly hope, the right step to prohibit the storage in open tanks or lagoons. Now, there have been a number of things, and I have helped the NAG group word these things, and I had, I appreciate very much what your attorney has done, and I think he's made some improvements to the other work, and we've suggested some modest ones in addition. We think it should be rewritten and placed in another place in the code. I think that's, would be the best thing, to have it properly worded and so forth. But what it, the way it's worded now, we're willing to accept it, and we'd like to, we'd like to, in conclusion, I just want to say that we want to applaud Purdue. We should protect our citizens and our taxpayers, and we hope that the chicken industry will continue to thrive, and it is going to thrive, so long as we help them solve this problem. And this bill will help solve this problem. You can imagine, if you've got citizens that's upset with more tanks in here, what is going to be the reaction? They're going to be on you, they're going to be on everybody else, and they're going to want stronger action. The way to go forward, just as Lee Richardson said a minute ago, is to pass this. It's not an anti-industry bill, it's a pro-industry bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Any other public comments?
Good evening. Mark Cropper, 6200 Coastal Highway, Suite 200, Ocean City, Maryland. First, I do want to compliment Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Wilbur in their submittal to the council as far as their legal analysis. I, in fact, agree with much of that analysis. Where I would disagree is having to do with preemption by implication. And while Mr. Wilbur and Mr. Mitchell, I think, have correctly stated the law, I do believe that the state of Maryland has comprehensively regulated this arena, having to do with soil amendments, soil conditioners, or DAF, such that it's inclusive of storage. And the reason I say that is, most farmers that utilize DAF material will tell you that how you store it, where you store it dictates directly how practical and pragmatic it is to use that type of material on your fields. If you make the storage of it overly complicated, then obviously, it's no longer reasonable, feasible, and easy to use on your farmland. As such, I think even if you pass this legislation with the amendments, I believe a very good argument could be made that this arena, this field, has been preempted by the state of Maryland, and could and likely would be challenged. Now, I agree with Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Wilbur, where if you remove the word fertilizer from the legislation, as is being recommended, that will largely cure any claim of express preemption, which is what Mr. Mitchell indicated to you earlier. The Wacomico County Comprehensive Land Use Plan is inundated with language, talking about the need to support and encourage and facilitate your agricultural industries. It's one of the largest industries in Wacomico County. For those farmers wishing to use soil amendments or soil conditioners, nobody can possibly argue that if you pass this ban, you pass this legislation, you are making the use of that material much more difficult, to the point that many farmers will choose not to use it. Now, there's a lot of people in this audience that will cheer that. But it would absolutely be inconsistent with your Comprehensive Land Use Plan with regard to its provisions, talking about supporting and facilitating the agricultural community. Likewise, the state and county right to farm law, that law is there for one primary purpose, to protect farmers, to protect the agricultural community from complaints and actions resulting from agricultural activity. It includes noise, dust, traffic, odor, and the like. Again, how anybody can possibly argue that banning the storage of DAF, which will make the use of DAF much more difficult, how that is not inconsistent with your right to farm law is beyond me. I said at the last meeting where I testified, the proper solution here, in my humble opinion, is you don't ban it, but you make the location of these tanks a special exception in the agricultural zone. And you put limitations, setbacks, separation requirements, such that these tanks can only go on certain properties and certain areas on those properties. And you leave it to your Board of Zoning Appeals to determine, on a site-specific, case-by-case basis, if a tank should be located on a piece of property and where. Because of the public hearing process for all such matters that go before the Board of Appeals, the public, anybody and everybody can come before the board that evening and testify in support of or against that particular tank on that particular piece of property. I would very respectfully submit to you, that is the proper course of conduct here. It solves the issue for the contestants that want a say in the outcome, and want a say as to where or if these tanks can be located. And it's also the proper thing for the agricultural community and the farmers, that not only wish to utilize these materials, but wish to store those materials on their properties for greater than 45 days. So I appreciate you giving everybody the time to speak this evening, as you have previously. I know this has been an important issue, it's been going on for years. I know everybody wants a resolution, but I will say this. No law is better than a bad law, and I think there is a better law that you can pass here than what you're considering tonight, which is a total ban. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cropper.
Good evening, everybody. Sam Parker, Wacomico County, farmer and resident. I'd have my mind made up that I wasn't going to speak tonight. I think everybody's familiar with my position, and, but I want to, want to say that I've heard some good points on, from both sides of the table tonight, from my friends and my neighbors that sit in this room. Also sympathize with folks who live in the area around the existing tank. But I also want to point out something that was, that perception, I think, a misconception, that because Purdue Salisbury Plant is the only plant in Wacomico County, that that's the basis for talking about all of the material coming into Wacomico County from outside. But we've got to remember is that there are more chicken farms in Wacomico County that don't grow chickens for Purdue Salisbury than do. That's just one of Purdue's processing plants, and there's three other companies that operate, four, that grow chickens in Wacomico County. So just kind of want to fix that misconception. That's the purpose of my getting up here. Thank you.
Parker.
Charles Wright, Mardele Springs, farmer, poultry farmer for, I guess, going on 29 years now. Just one point, I agree with my friend Lee, everything he said, the gentleman here. I have one question. They've been applying DAF in this county, I know, since the 80s. Nobody's come to you begging to put up a tank, to store it, to make it easier. All this time, they were able to apply DAF. They've recently started using the contained tanks in the field, which is a great idea. They're contained, closed, trucks can come, speeds at the process for getting it on. The tanks aren't necessary to apply DAF. Nobody's fighting the DAF application, but the tank, that's the issue. And I would support you passing this legislation.
Mr. Wright. Public comments. So, and that concludes the public comments. I'd like to thank everybody very much for their comments and being so succinct in their That being said, we still have legislative bill number 2022-10 on the floor. It is up to the council as far as their responsibility, whether they want to make a motion a motion to approve this bill or not.
I'll kind of get things started. I mean, I know Mr. Mitchell and like several other people have done likewise. You know, I want to thank Mr. Mitchell in working with Mr. Wilbur. You know, they've recommended some amendments that really just refine, doesn't change the intent here, but helps with clarification and some refinements. They've made five of these. You know, just as a suggestion, I think maybe we should go through those amendments. I don't know procedurally if we have to quote "approve" the bill subject to the amendments first, or can we go through, I know we have to discuss each amendment individually to add it to the bill.
Yeah, what I would, you know, Councilman McCain, what we would do, it would require, of course, someone to make a motion to approve legislative bill 2022-10 with a second. And then in discussion, I think what we should do is, Mr. Mitchell laid it out very clearly, we would go from his first recommendation amendment, second recommendation, third. Not necessarily in chronological order, but it will address it succinctly as Mr. Mitchell proposed it. So, that's the steps that I would suggest that we take. And then once that done, however it may or may not be amended, then the legislative bill, we would vote on that as amended or as not amended, depending on the votes taken.
All right, well, I appreciate that, that helps with the process. With that said, then I'll make a motion to approve the bill.
Motion to approve legislative bill number 2022-10 is their second.
Second.
Motion is second. So, now we're in the discussion phase. As Mr. McCain was suggesting, I think the debates of the bill as a whole could be discussed at any point in time, but right now, I think what we want to do is to try to address the issues of the amendments per se. The first amendment that Mr. Wilbur had recommended was to amend by replacement the definition sections 225-62 E1A and 225-65 A.1.1A. So, if there is a council member that would like to see this legislative bill amended as such as noted in your notes of amendment number one, I would need you to make a motion and state the amendment. Does anybody follow that? Yeah. Josh?
I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion. I warn folks, this is going to be awkward, but we're going to try to melt together what we understand. And I know we don't have a backdrop behind us where you can see exactly how the text is changing or what that looks like, but we're going to try to do this together and hopefully we'll arrive at a good conclusion. So, I'll make an amendment, number one, according, starting with what Mr. Mitchell has put forward. It's be amendment, as stated, 225-62 E1A and 225-65 A1A, to read open top storage structure and open or partially open. Now, I am adding that in as, not on your phrase here, but this is, not on what you currently see in front of you, Mr. Mitchell's, but this is a slight addition according to the Neighborhood Advisory Group, the NAG, folks who had slight changes to this. So, this will be open top storage structure and open or partially open top structure, whether above ground, partially above ground, or below ground level, or a lagoon-type structure used for the storage of an agricultural product, byproduct, soil amendment, and/or DAF residuals.
If I could ask, if you don't mind, I'm going to try to keep this as easy to follow as possible. I would like to try to review the amendments that Mr. Mitchell has given us first. We'll complete that. And then if you want to introduce the additional amendments, we'll do those second.
So, we'll just amend the amendment?
You will be amending an amendment, but that's exactly how.
It's going to get awkward.
Because it's going to get very hard to separate one from the other if we don't.
Okay.
You confused me there, because that is, that is Mr. Mitchell's.
No, there, no, Josh introduced a few other elements, and it's going to get very confusing if we try to combine them all together at the same time and then.
So, just so folks know that we've got a sheet in front of us that has the amendments. I think you may or may not have seen this in the, so we'll read through that and then we'll amend the amendments.
Yep.
Okay.
I got you now.
It's fine. So, then I'll just offer it up as read, and then we'll make the amendment, if that's okay. So, open top storage structure and open top structure, whether above ground, partially above ground, or below ground level, or a lagoon-type structure used for the storage of an agricultural product, byproduct, or soil amendment.
Amendment on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion?
I think we should add in the additions from the community group. That would be an open top, or an open or, pardon me, an open or partially open top structure. Bill, make me sure I'm right on this, and Nicole, I'm looking at you. And then, on the very end of that, we're going to say an agricultural product, byproduct, soil amendment, and/or DAF residuals.
Okay, let me try to, try to keep some continuity here. I'd like to, the motion is second on the initial amendment as read. We'll take a vote on that. We're going to go through all the amendments that Mr. Mitchell recommended. Then it would be the time for you to introduce the additional amendments, such as removing the word "topped" and changing it with "partially open." And then we can address those issues as well, okay? So, we'll do the basic amendments first, as Mr. Mitchell is suggesting. Clear that all the way through to the end of the bill, and then come back to recognize any of the other amendments that you might like to make based on what was turned in from the NAG group.
So, what Mr. Hastings is saying, he wants to change something right now in that amendment that was just voted, not voted on, but, yes, proposed. But you're saying, go through it and then come back and make an amendment on that amendment that he wants to talk about now.
Right, because if you see how it's been presented in front of us, Mr. Mitchell's amendment stands alone as an amendment. The NAG group has proposed is additions to what Mr. Mitchell said, and it's also been stated in their documentation as well. And instead of trying to conflate the issues and combine them both together at one time, what I'm trying to do is get one thing done all the way down and all the way through, and then to come back and to tweak whatever Josh and the NAG group might want tweaked for the final product.
How will we vote on that? Vote on the original bill as amended, as amended as second?
No, 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 we'll go through all the amendments to the end, and then we'll introduce the second set of amendments.
Okay.
So, you're, just to be clear, you're saying that we can, we can approve like Mr. Mitchell's First Amendment here.
Right.
But we can still come back.
And then we're going to.
And amend that after we've gone through it.
We're going to tweak it.
I just want to make sure we can still come back.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, we don't lose Mr. Hastings' comments.
No, it's just that I think we need to keep the two separate, or it's going to get really conflated.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I was hoping we could tweak it and then vote on one bill.
I get it, Larry, but I think we better, based on the way it's presented in front of us, I'm afraid it's going to be a bit confusing. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Then, then I rescind the amended amendment, and I'll just say that we go forward with, and do you want to vote on each amendment for clarity?
So, I second it, I did the second.
I have the second. So, any further discussion on the amendment from Mr. Hastings? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm going to be in favor. I'll state ahead of time, as where we are right now, I'm not in favor of this bill. I'll tell you that, I'll tell you my reasons later. But I will vote in favor of the amendments, because if this bill passes, I want it to be the best bill we can possibly get out of here in this condition, so.
Likewise, John, I may vote for some of the amendments.
Okay, okay.
As far as the bill goes.
All right, so what, are you in favor of this amendment?
No.
Okay, Chair says aye, so let's say six one in favor of the amendment. Any other amendments?
I make a motion to amend the second amendment. Amend by deleting the word "tank" and replacing it with the word "structure" at the following locations, the second whereas clause, Sections 225-62E and E2, and Sections 225-65A and A.2.
Councilwoman Ackley, there's a motion to amend, there's a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, amendment has passed. Any other amendments?
I make a motion to amend the definitions by deleting the word "processing" and replacing it with the words "rendering process" at the following locations, Sections 225-62E1B and Sections 225-65A1B.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion's carried, the Chair votes aye, motion's carried, amendment passes. Any other amendments?
Amendment number four, amending Sections 225-62E.2 and Section 225-65.
E.3?
E.3, sorry, and then 225-65A.3, by deleting each of those sections and replacing them with the following, "The prohibition stating herein shall not prohibit a farmer or farming business from temporarily storing liquid organic soil amendment in a mobile closed container for a period of not more than 45 consecutive days during the application process, provided that the land on which it is stored is in Wycomico County's agricultural rural A1 zoning district, and that stored material is applied to the same land on which it is stored."
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, motion's carried, amendment passes. Any other amendments?
Amendment number five, delete the words fertilizer or from legislative bill number 2022-10 everywhere it appears.
Second?
Second.
And discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes. All right, now what you'll see, we've done now, we have sort of consolidated one bill as per recommendations of Mr. Mitchell. At this time, then, you have, before you, you have that bill with the recommendations that were proposed by NAG. So, if there's anyone that wants to now make those separate amendments feel free.
Mr. Cannon, we just got those recommendations today. You know, the public, much less the council, has not had time to dissect those. These other amendments, you know, the county attorneys, councils had time, you know, they've been discussed before, but these other amendments, I mean, they just got laid on our table today or emails today. So, I don't think they should even be considered. I mean, we've amended this bill, we've done five amendments. Very seldom, other than, other than our budget, which we amend the heck out of when we do that, very seldom do we have a bill that we have more than one or two amendments and, you know, so we've done five amendments on this so far.
And then amend amendments.
And now we want to amend amendments. But like you say, it's just been brought, I mean, if we're going to vote on this, I know you all, not everybody, but a lot of people say, hey, we need to get this done, and so.
It's confusing.
Yeah, I think that, or I think what Mr. Hastings was getting ready to propose is, and I'll go back where I said earlier, when we first got this started, I commend Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Wilbur for their amendments here. I mean, I think they've done a good job with this, and I know people from the Neighborhood Action Group, they've been very involved with this for three and a half years, and they've made some good recommendations, and some of those are incorporated into what Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Wilbur have done. I think the comments, I still want us to walk through these, I think some of the comments are just actually small refinements. I know, for example, I'm not interested in striking anything that Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Wilbur have agreed to that we just voted on. I think there are a few, just a couple of words we can add, you know, that will actually make this better, as getting back to Mr. Cannon's comment, you know, if we're going to pass this, we want the best legislation we can do. So, you know, I certainly see no problem with us discussing the amendments, because number one, it was just recommended to us to kind of adopt these, and now come back to them to see if there's any refinements we want to make to them. So, you know, we're still just following our process.
Yes, Josh.
I'd add on that to that, I'm certainly sensitive of us getting, you know, amendments, a large sheets of amendments, and then trying to review them only in the hour or so before a meeting, but at the same time, this is, what is proposed here is, you know, a page and a quarter, of which is partly clerical, and is only addition of a line or two. So, we're really only talking about a couple changes that really shouldn't, that'll only strengthen, I think, what we put here. So, I'd like to see us continue to move forward with that tonight. Let's knock it out and get it done. I mean, we, certainly folks have been working on this for more than three years, I think it's time to move forward with it. But either way, I think the changes that we will consider here are not, are not ones that are going to take a whole lot of time in consideration, but are faultfully put together by the folks who are most impacted by this, who have put a lot of time into it, so I'd like to see us consider that.
Mr. Holloway, light of your concerns, I think legislatively, what you would, if you have concerns about the fact that you don't want to continue in the direction we're going with the information that we've had just within the last 24 hours, I don't know whether or not, but your proper procedure would be to entertain a motion to table the legislative bill.
Well, we know where that's going to go.
I understand, okay. I just wanted to make you clear as to where, when we would go, how we might do it. All right, thank you. And moving on, okay? Josh, I think you were leading this, is that right?
I'll look to, I'll jump in, it's fine, yeah. So, Amendment one, well, it says open top structure and open, we're going to add, if that's okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend that, to add in, and this would be, for clarity, this is the same as Mr. Mitchell's Amendment one for location-wise, so it would say an open or partially open, and we would, we do not need the word "topped," so this would be an open or partially open structure, whether above ground, partly above ground, below ground level, or a lagoon-type structure used for the storage of, and in this case, make sure I'm reading this right, we will be adding on at the end the word "and/or DAF residuals." So, this would be, that'll be an open or partially open, sorry, I'm reading three different pages here, make sure I got it right, an open or partially open.
Structure.
Structure, yeah, whether above ground, partly above ground, or partly above or below ground level, or a lagoon-type structure used for the storage of an agricultural product, byproduct, soil amendment, and/or DAF residuals.
So, you were recommending to add "and/or DAF residuals."
Yeah, and, and partly open above that, and then I think striking "topped," if that's not already taken out of there.
So, the motion on the first definition under 1A.
If I may, I've, I've got what purports to be the Neighborhood Action Group recommended, and that isn't it.
That is the, that is what Mr. Hastings is amending, recommending to amend. He's not saying that he's going to verbatim take every recommendation from the organization, he is simply making the motion as he'd like to see it read.
See, I'm trying, having trouble following, so you're not asking to replace agricultural product, byproduct, fertilizer, soil amendment?
He's just making an addition.
He's adding that to it.
He's just saying, okay.
I appreciate the clarification, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your responses that you sent us, you know, but I think that's where the difference lies, this is more just making a slight addition to something not striking and replacing.
So, the, there is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so for clarification, Mr. Hastings is suggesting that we add to the definition partially, replacing the word "topped" structure with partially "open" structure, and at the end of the definition, include DAF residuals. And we have a motion second. Any recommendations, any comments?
I think one clarification, I think you said, did you say replacing?
Replacing the word "topped" with partially "open."
Well, I think what he said was an open.
An open or partially open structure.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, right, it's eliminating the word "topped." Any further discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Hastings' amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, one opposed, six in favor, one opposed, the amendment passes. Any other amendments from anyone?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at, I think part B of that, which would be E1B, where currently it says liquid organic, we're striking fertilizer, so it'll say liquid organic soil amendment. The state of Maryland approved liquid organic soil amendment, produced from poultry. I think we should add the word "processing," it just says produced from poultry. I think originally that should have "processing," and we wanted to get rendering in there, and we ended up getting rendering in there, but then we sort of took out the processing. So, I just think it makes it clearer that we need to add the word. So I just think it makes it clearer that we need to add the word processing there. And then it stays the same, or other animal rendering process residuals via dissolved air flotation process. And because we just added the and/or DAF residual above, I think we then need to add in B at the end, the same thing, and/or DAF residual. So that's consistent.
I'll second it.
Where are you placing the processing? You lost me.
Just after the word poultry.
Oh, I see.
Right in the middle, yeah, just after the word poultry.
Is there any possibility that some other animal would be processed?
I mean, it could say animal processing.
So it'd say from poultry or animal processing or rendering?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, I think that's actually, that's probably a better way to word it. I think originally it actually had that at one point.
And what are you saying about the DAF residuals? Where does that go?
At the very end, just like we just did above.
Including DAF residuals, is that what you're saying?
Right. At the very end. That's just being consistent to the 1A.
Motion's a second. Any discussion?
You're keeping, you're basically keeping everything in there, but you're adding processing.
Right, right. Yeah, we're not striking anything that Mr. Mitchell's.
Okay.
We did hear a concern that they're willing to keep the processing as part of that, so.
Okay. Any other discussion questions?
Is the motion for 62E.1B and 65A.1B?
Yes, yeah, yeah, because they're the same. It's the same, yeah. So for clarification, yeah, right, that would be for E, help me out, Ms. Hurley, the Es.
E.1B?
E.1B and.
65A.1B?
65A.1B, right. They're just, because they're saying the same thing.
Okay. That is an amendment on two separate sections.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Any other discussion questions?
Could I, at this point, another point of clarification. So Josh's amendment to the storage would also be on both spots.
That is true.
We did note that when we passed it.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion's carried. Amendment passes. Any other amendments?
Alright, the next is adding in, I'm trying to find out what this is. So we're going to add in a definition. So I think this is E.1B, I believe, is where it currently says liquid organic fertilizer soil amendment.
Which amendment number is it?
This would be amendment number two on the, on the NAG.
Bill just did.
Strike that, am I doing it right? Oh, no, we're adding in, did I get it right?
Well, there's two ways, there's two ways to add. We use that term DAF residual in the class two. So when we do the definitions, we've got to define that somewhere in this bill. Whether it's a continuation, you could just create a, maybe Mr. Mitchell will help us, we could just create a C.
They're looking to put a definition in, a specific definition for DAF.
DAF residuals.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we keep using that term, so somewhere in here we need.
Oh, I see.
Say what that is.
But is that something that we can do here, or is that something that MDA, is it within the MDA code defining that?
That was an interesting question, because my next question was going to be asked Mr. Wilbur and Mr. Mitchell. Is this a, is this a legal definition? Organic byproduct material created in an animal processing facility and rendering, because I know how complicated this sometimes can get.
Well, I think where we stand now, if they add, if they'd simply add that, since they've already included DAF residuals several places, if they continue to add DAF residuals and make C a definition of DAF residuals, because their original was to replace the definition with DAF residuals. And that seems to me, it's said another, another thing.
Right, it's not replacing anything you've done.
No, I understand that, but I'm looking at what the NAG group sent out.
Right, but Bill has sort of changed it a little bit. He wants to make DAF residuals as a section C, as a separate definition entirely.
Right, and I think, Paul can answer too. I think that works because you're adding DAF residuals so far in four places. So if you then define DAF residuals, you'll have liquid organic soil amendment, blah, blah, what we have, including DAF residuals, and then you'll tell us what that is.
Right, right.
Sorry, C, I think works. C works. My question to you is, is that a definition? Is that a true definition for DAF residuals?
No idea. I've never, never had any DAF residuals.
Right. I can't say one way or the other, whether that's in state law somewhere, those work, that wording, or?
And I think that's what we keep circling back to, right?
Yeah.
Is, and that's something that we're going to have to address in our state law, is how are we defining this? What is the definition?
I think we've referenced DAF residuals. As far as the definition, I think you're right. Leave it up to how the state defines DAF residuals. I think to move forward tonight, I would put it in as a C. And, you know, we can check to see if there is a DAF residual state law definition.
I agree.
Rather, I'd rather know it's legal before we vote on it.
I don't think, it's not a question of legal, I think it's just a question of.
Appropriate.
Those. I mean, that is what DAF is.
I don't know.
You know, I mean, the whole thing, this is what we're talking about. So, but we've already, we've already got it in the bill, so somewhere in there we need to.
It should be defined.
Right, it's a terms.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if a DAF residual is the same as a DAF wash down water. I don't know.
I mean, what, do they consider DAF wastewater? Like, what is, where are they defining it as?
What's, yeah, that's, I don't know what the residual is. That, as opposed, now, at one time, we kept talking about DAF wash down water. We just use the process of DAF as the way the, now the animal processing and/or rendering, we do refer to it as residuals via the DAF, but.
It's no different, end of the day, it's no different than, we have two other things defined here, we have to define them. So it's for the purpose of the bill.
Exactly.
We need a definition for the purpose of the bill, so we can put in there.
Yes, that's right.
And definition, we feel is correct for the purpose of the bill.
And as I read the definition, I, I'm okay with it, in terms of what is a DAF residual. That was a question we had. What about the end of the comment where it says, including material collected by means of dissolved air flotation, commonly called DAF residuals? It's almost as if the term DAF residuals is being used to define the term DAF residuals, Mr. Wilbur. A bit circular. Yes.
I actually don't think that's correct, because the DAF, the dissolved air flotation is DAF. It may produce a residual.
It sounds to me like they're suggesting that DAF residuals could be some materials brought from another dissolved air flotation processing company and put into another DAF tank. I don't know.
Right. I would say, to be clear, we've got, of course, just for clarity, obviously, there's the, there's the process dissolve. Dissolved air flotation is a process.
Right.
And then there's a product that is coming out of this. So we're trying to, and by the way, let me also respond to that, you know, certainly, we need the state of Maryland to be a little bit more clear on this. The way that, so the state of Maryland recognizes soil amendments, it is just lifted, listed with biochar or other kind of, you know, you name it, along there. So it doesn't have a clear definition in that way either. But in this sense, we have a process of which a tank might create a dissolved air, and then we have a product that comes out of that.
Yeah.
So in this case, they're defining it, or a material created by a human rendering facility, including materials collected by means of the process, and then it's known as DAF residual.
Got you. Perhaps we could say on that, toward the end of that, including material collected by means of a dissolved air flotation process, period.
Because you put as defined by MDA, so it's not contradicting if there is a state law?
There's, it's not defined, and they don't define it, all they say is just listed as a, as a soil amendment. Unfortunately, they're not.
Yeah, maybe this helps with just getting back to what I said earlier. Because we use the term in the bill, you know, we've got to, for the bill's purposes, have a definition for the term, just like we have to have a definition for open top structure or liquid organic soil amendment.
So that's, yeah.
Have to define that, because.
You're defining it for this bill.
For this bill.
It may not meet some other definition, but that's for their views, yeah.
Right.
So you're okay with what Mr. Wilbur suggested, including material collected by means of dissolved air flotation process?
Exactly.
Okay. Alright, that's the motion. Okay. Did we get a second?
A second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes. Any other recommendations?
Do you want also amend?
Any other?
So this would be, I think, going off of, yeah, you're right, we're trying to make sure that we get it right. Mr. Mitchell's amendment four in 225, we're just going to add.
Just add DAF residual to that.
Oh, sorry, add that line, storage. So. Make sure we get, okay. So this, we're adding in one other piece here to make sure that organizations like Purdue, who create DAF, this is from the Neighborhood Group, put this together. They wanted to make sure that folks that, you know, processing facilities, that they're not being further penalized for doing the right thing and creating up. So this is.
225-62 outside storage, E.2, is that correct?
E.3.
E.3?
And then 225.
You're going to amendment four, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
And then in amendment four, that would be to.
Can you clarify the sections that you're mending first?
Yeah.
We made an amendment to delete that.
Right, so we're adding that back in.
Do you want amendment three or number four?
So this should be amendment number four on the neighborhood.
Okay, where it says the prohibition stated herein shall not prohibit, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what that is suggesting, that they are adding simply to what we have already amended, you would be amending the terminology of storage at the processing location where legally created nor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I believe we amended it to delete that entirety.
You're not deleting it, you're adding.
You're just adding that.
You're just adding it.
But I thought the first amendment we made was to delete that section.
Replacing that with.
Replace it.
Okay.
Add it.
But that's what we put in. This is what we put in.
Yeah.
You added it.
He is amending what we're putting in.
So we're, yeah, so we added this in this time, so now we're going to add that line to this, in that section.
They were very careful to place in here, in the amendments, what they anticipated was going to be amended by Mr. Mitchell. So this is the final product from what we initially voted on.
Right, so we are, yeah, you're right. So we're adding in, so we're into the, into that line, the prohibition. Let me just say this. It's going, we're going to make an amendment to read it off, and the read, and it's going to be 25, I think you know where it's at, 225-62E.3, 225-65A.3. This is going to then, motion to have it read, the prohibition stated herein shall not prohibit storage at the processing location where legally created nor a farmer or farming business from temporarily storing liquid organic soil amendments in a mobile closed container for a period of not more than forty-five consecutive days during which the application process provided that the land on which is stored in Wycomico County Agricultural Rural A.1 zoning district and that stored material is applied to the same land on which is stored. So we're just adding in of that, we're only adding in the language after the word prohibit. It'll say storage at the processing location where legally created nor.
Thank you. There's a motion.
Can I, can I bring it before you?
No. Go ahead.
This is an issue that arose this today. And if you put that language in there, are you not creating a situation where some processing plant creates the DAF or what have you? And then they can store it without any type of regulation as to the zone they're in, how they store it, whether it's open, whether it's closed. That's, that, there's no, because the rest of that only deals with what the farmer can do.
So this is specifically referring to the processing location as opposed to a space where a farmer may temporarily hold it for forty-five day period and then apply to their land. So this is basically, this is aimed at the other side of that. If Purdue Chicken is processing, they want, and they create a byproduct, a DAF product, that we want to make sure that they are legally protected in doing so.
Right, but you're now going to have, in wherever their zone may be, or some other plant is built, they could store in a open container, you know, two or three million gallons of this product. There's no regulation as to how long, whether it has to be closed top or.
They currently have the legal ability to do that. And this would just basically, I guess, go further to say that we are not penalizing, we're not going out of their way to harm them, that they continue, that they can continue to do what they have done.
Their grandfather, in his prospective bill, they could do that anyway.
Yeah, this is more of an amendment for, to protect the agricultural community, to make sure that the farming community knew this is not something, that this particular effort is only, is as narrow as possible, that it is, that we are not trying to harm any of the existing agricultural processors.
I think he's trying to say we're making an attempt to show that we're not trying to supersede any other existing laws.
I think Mr. Mitchell's correct in that, that obviously, we're not going to be, this doesn't go any further. This just, but this, I think this does add to the language to make sure that the folks know that we do care about the poultry industry here in the county.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second.
Second.
Yes, okay. Any other discussion, further discussion? Mr. Mitchell, if you want to review it, and maybe we get back to this later on it, I feel that'd be fine, but you have real reservations on it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes. Any other amendments?
I think there's one last one, and I think might wrap this up. In Mr. Mitchell's last item, we eliminate the word fertilizer or, which is fine. But we've been adding in these other items, everywhere where it says soil amendment, everywhere where, you know, where it said fertilizer or soil amendment, we've been putting in there and/or DAF residual. So I think we just need to add to that, that last amendment, you know, just like we've struck fertilizer in those same areas where we've left the term soil amendment, we need to say comma and/or DAF residual. We've already, we've already done that in three places or whatever, but there's a few other places, that's that same language.
Right.
It's like, it's everywhere you struck the fertilizer, it has that same thing.
One would be 225-62E.2.
Yep.
It needs to go in there.
It shows up there, yep.
Yep.
And actually, back in the.
The whereas clause.
And the whereas clause.
In the original, in the whereas, it had fertilizer or soil amendment, and you struck fertilizer. So now it would just say soil amendment and/or DAF residual. But I think we can, instead of doing it, saying everyone of them, we just need to say, you know, delete the words fertilizer and add DAF residual. What, I don't know, Mr. Wilbur, what's easier? You just pointed out those places. Is it easier to point out the different places or easier?
The identical place in the other sections, 225-65A.2.
Right. Right, because we repeat the same thing over and over again, right, right now, we got it in half the places, and half the places we don't, so we need to get it in all the, all the places.
Are we on the same page, Mr. Wilber?
Yes.
Okay.
May I just ask another, another issue? I'm, I'm not a problem with what Mr. McCain said, but I understood that the prior amendments were going to add to the end of each one, including DAF residuals, but now, we're going to put them, some places, it'll still say that, other places, it will now have the fertilizer.
Fertilizer's out.
Fertilizer's gone, just like you, just like you did, you struck fertilizer.
No, I mean, it'll be, for instance, in, in the definition of open top storage, that's been changed and added at the end, including DAF residuals.
Right.
But then the next one down, there are two places where eliminating fertilizer, so you wouldn't have including DAF residuals anymore, you would have that up in where the fertilizer is, correct?
Well, you actually, we've already added it to E1B at the end.
I thought the purpose of this particular amendment, as, as suggested, was simply to add DAF residuals to section E2, under open top storage structure.
Well, it needs to be consistent, so when we say, you know, like, you know, E2 would be one of the places, because right now, it doesn't say that. So, yeah, it would say soil amendment, and you're correct, but Mr. Wilber, like he has pointed out, like, the, the whereas clause back in the beginning is the same.
I get you.
It's the same language, so it just needs to say and or DAF residual as well.
In the first sentence of an act, amend chapter 225, in both of the whereas clauses, and then at, on section E2.
Yes.
Okay, so there's four places where the DAF...
And on the next page, 225 dash 65 A2, same change.
All right.
Yep.
Good job.
It's just being, we just got to put it everywhere.
Okay.
Can the motion be to direct counsel to place this where necessary to...
For consistency?
Yeah, for consistency, because if you just put in that in place of fertilizer or, it doesn't quite fit dramatically, so we would, sometimes we'd add at the end, sometimes it might go in the body.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes. Any other further amendments?
I guess I just have one last question, is, Mr. Mitchell, as far as, where does it say, the, in E2, last line, this prohibition is perspective? I know we touched on it briefly before, just wanted clarity on that, I guess, do you want to clarify why that's in there?
Yeah, it's, it's in there, we, we discuss this as whether it was even, it's going to be prospective, whether it says so or not. There's, there's nothing in the language of the bill that allows, that, that is recreate, is creating a retroactive bill, so that's not happening. So, the question would be, is it, just to make it plain for anybody, kind of like the one you were talking about, that it's prospective? I was reluctant to have a, a sentence or so about grandfathering, because grandfathering is already the law. So, if you were, at the time this becomes effective, if you are a legally nonconforming, a legally, a preexisting, nonconforming use, legally in existence, you're, you're grandfathered in. So, we just made it prospective, so that anybody looking at it doesn't say, hey, you know, they're trying to close this down, or stop that, or whatever. And that was pretty much brought up by the council several times, that they wanted to be prospective.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Mitchell, I have a question, can you go back before you read your amendments to clarify something you said?
Maybe.
You, you made the comment that DAF didn't fall under the right to farm act because it was not produced on the farm. Did you say that?
It's, it's not listed in those groups of items that it covers. I don't think.
I think you said, I think...
Yeah, that's, that is what I said.
Because it's not produced on the farm. That's what you said, it's not covered...
Yeah, I may, yeah, it's...
That's what you said.
It's, it's two things, it's not, it's not in the list of items, and it's not produced on the farm. When you read the, if you read the bill, it says, not, not our bill, the right to farm, it says, basically, it's produced by the farmer on the farm.
So, so isn't there numerous other products that's not produced on the farm that the farmer uses, such as granular fertilizer, liquid nitrogen and such? So, if that falls under the right to farm, why wouldn't this? Even though it's not produced on the farm?
It says, I mean, one of, one of the phrases, I don't have the entire quote right here, is that the product has to be grown, raised, or cultivated by the farmer.
Understand that, but you, what you said earlier, it did not fall under the right to farm act because it wasn't produced on the farm.
Yeah, but we're, but we're talking about the storage.
Understand that, understand.
So, so...
There are other items on the farm that's not produced on the farm, we store fertilizer, we store liquid nitrogen, we store, I guess, anything, that they, they're, they store anything they're not using today until tomorrow, right?
But the right farm, the right to farm is basically a, a protection in the courts and judicial procedure from a claim made by a neighbor that says you're, what you're doing on the farm is a nuisance. So, yeah, so you can defend against that, say no right to farm.
Okay.
So, the, the people, anybody who would claim it to be a nuisance, i- is going to be talking about the storage, that the, the use of it, the application is going to be protected, but the storage, possibly not. And we were advised, when we, we brought this up with people that know how this is used, it's basically applied, it arrives at the farm in a concealed container. So, they're, they're not storing that.
I just wanted to clarify what she said, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I'm fairly certain I did say that, yeah.
Any questions, comments?
One other.
Yes.
Did we vote on that last?
We didn't have time.
Did we vote on that?
No.
Yeah, we still have to.
Still got, any further discussion? Josh, did you have a thing? All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes. Any other amendments? Any further discussion?
I guess the, the, just the last question is, going back, Mr. Mitchell, to the, where it says this prohibition is prospective, would this negate the, I guess, the, the limitations on legal nonconforming uses? Would this, you know, I guess, I'm a bit, it's just kind of like, it's a concern that it could be introduced ambiguity as to whether or not it replaces the zoning code on legal nonconforming uses, is it worthwhile to keep in for that, that language? I guess, I guess, I know there's a sensitive audience there, folks who care that we're not, you know, that they've been harmed by the, the current situation that brought on a lot of this whole situation, do we feel like it's, it's important to keep in this prohibitionist perspective, or will that, does that open up the, does that open up any kind of ambiguity that's not necessary when it comes to zoning? I'm looking at Mr. Wilber, too.
You're losing me, I think it's almost the opposite, by saying it's prospective, I think it makes it plain that it won't be effective until it's, what is it, 60 days, assuming there's no referendum, and then, it goes from that day forward, which it does anyway, I mean, that's pretty much the law. In fact, it says prospective should not have any effect on anything that's grandfathered in. Notice, if it's grandfathered, it's grandfathered, doesn't have anything to do with whether you say this is prospective, or it starts today, or a week from now, or whatever.
Well, I guess, maybe just for clarity, I know, I know that this was an issue from some of the folks that are there, that maybe we should actually strike that language, just to be, I know some of the folks have said that that's an issue, I, I know you're here, you're saying the opposite, you're thinking it's doing the, the right thing. So, I guess with that said, I'd like to make a motion then to strike this prohibition is prospective.
Motion, is there a second?
Is this another amendment?
Yeah.
Motion, is there a second? Josh, it looks like your motion...
It happens sometimes.
Okay.
That's good discussion.
Any discussions? Questions, comments?
Sure.
All those in favor of legislative bill number 2022 dash 10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
As amended.
As amended.
I'm sorry, thank you very much, meant to say that, as amended. We have, and the chair votes, no, so we have five, five to two, in favor of legislative bill number 2022 dash 10, legislative bill 2022 dash 10 passes, as amended. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn as Waukamaka County Council and convene as Urban Services Commission.
Can I, I hate to do this, but I, I think the actual call for the vote was, and the vote was taken before as amended was said, I think just, it might be a good idea.
I'll say it again, entertain a motion to approve legislative bill number 2022 dash 10 as amended.
Amended.
All those in favor of legislative bill 2022 dash 10 as amended, say aye.
Aye, there you go.
Thank you.
Should you do it by roll call, since it is a bill?
Certainly, a roll call, starting at the end.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Chair votes, nay. It's five to two, thank you, Ms. Hurley. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Legislative bill number 2022 dash 10, as amended, passes. This time, entertain a motion to adjourn as Waukamaka County Council and convene as Urban Services Commission.
Let me move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If anyone would like to leave at this time, we would have public comments later, if you, if you cared to express your, any, anything during that time, but you're not going to interrupt us if you want to leave.